We're delighted to be here and entering the holiday season, it's not hard to find ways, uh, things that we can be thankful for, the cause dropped this, uh, for 2014. Much of that optimism is just from community that really cares. It's hard to find examples of that. All along, uh, through the news, just this last week, our fallen heroes are honored at the National Cemetery because we care. The less fortunate, but poised children, dinner is taboo, and heaven is tattered because they care. Community involvement, assistance, pride in the living window, chapel, caroling, antorium, and other events organize the brains, holidays care, and building communities because they care. Email, public hearings, many meetings where individuals have expressed their feelings on many topics in fact in our city because they care. Improving the health, safety, welfare, and well-being of our citizens by our city, uh, staff, police, fire, because they care. Because, uh, let us, let these examples of caring community, uh, by answering those that they have to do, especially those that are on the length of university and others that are experiencing layoffs and other hardships because they care. Therefore, let us pray that for many community members, civic and related organizations and groups and city staff that make this a better community because they care, and let's pray that we are worthy of their trust. And, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I'll, I'll just...
(Inaudible) United States of America into the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Carol?
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Hussy?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, um, going to begin tonight with, uh, item three on our agenda, which is, uh, Resolution, uh, two oh one three dash forty, celebrating Greek and American democracy, uh, and, uh, I guess Drew's gonna read that, or are you gonna give the synopsis of that, or do you need to read it?
I, that's all I have is what you just said.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. President. Uh, had a great opportunity to, uh, go and hear some great presentations from a group of kids who are here tonight. I was only able to go to one of the two sessions, uh, and some councilmen joined me as well. And, uh, what their goal was, was, and I understand this to be kind of a greater national, uh, push, or at least some part of it, uh, to promote the Greek Independence Day and tell local leaders why, uh, we should celebrate, uh, the Greek heritage, uh, our Greek heritage and, uh, as a country. So we put together a resolution that was a, a variation of what, uh, some folks have proposed to the President of the United States to pass. And so, uh, what it does is simply announces that this council does in fact, uh, want to celebrate the Greek and, uh, Greek culture and their impact on, on us, primarily with regard to our form of government, uh, the democracy and, and our republic system form of government is something that we've, uh, inherited, uh, from ancient Greek. Uh, and so we did this resolution, and the kids are here today, uh, and, uh, what we've, what we'd like them to do is maybe after we, uh, well, it's up to you, but after, before we vote or after we vote, whatever the chair thinks is appropriate, we'll have the kids come up, just say what their names are, and we've got a little, uh, gift for them, and then at the end we'll do a, uh, maybe if the, if the president will indulge, a picture for us, for them. Uh, but really, if you look at our history, and these kids could tell you even more about it if, if we let them, uh, when you look at our, our culture, uh, some of our movies, uh, some of our, our television shows, certainly our, uh, 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 form of government, and, and so many other things actually come from those ancient Greeks, and, and these kids took a little time out, uh, as part of their assignment to kind of show us how that worked, and I appreciate it, and all the council people who were there appreciate it. So, if you'd like to do the vote first, or however you like.
I think that, I think that's what we'll do, is go ahead and, uh, and, uh, have a motion to, uh, accept the resolution. Motion second, so move.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, uh, is this, it's not a roll call? Okay, roll call vote then, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Um, I just wanted, wanted, wanted to say, uh, my job responsibilities kept me from attending either one of the presentations, but I've heard some really great things. Uh, the mayor commented this morning, uh, to me about this and said that, uh, he felt like probably the, uh, the youngsters making these presentations were probably smarter than he or I, either one, uh, maybe combined. Uh, he was really impressed, and, and I'm sure I would have been as well, and I, I really appreciate the efforts that you made, and I appreciate the fact that you're here tonight, and, uh, I don't know if any, any other councilman that might have attended might, might want to have something to say. Uh, if not, we have some, uh, some tokens here of, uh, to kind of, uh, I guess, uh, offer our respect for your efforts and, and what you've done and, and the great job that you've done. So, if, uh, you wanna come forward and meet me down front?
Thank you so much for having us tonight. These are the students from EER, which is Public School Gifted Program, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves just a little bit. Who's here from St. Joe? Who is here from Lawson? Who's here from Bel Air? Who's here from Cedar Hill? Who's homeschooled? Who's a third grader? Who's a fourth grader? Who's fifth grader? Okay, these are our students, and they worked really hard on their project, I'm very proud of them, so thank you for inviting us to come, we really appreciate it.
I think we'd be willing to spend a little time if they each wanna introduce themselves by name.
Sure.
They'd be willing to do that.
There you go.
My name is Ella Glosser.
I tell you what, look over, look in the camera up here, look, look over here, there's a camera, introduce yourself to people at home.
My name is Jordan Denny.
My name is Alyssa Lawbridge.
My name is Carrington Stillabauer.
My name is Meredith Long.
My name is Hunter Marsh.
My name is Madeline Becker.
My name is Sudi Kumar.
My name is Ashley York.
My name is Chapel Dobbs.
My name is Ava Morrissey.
My name is Abigail Janson.
My name is Rhett Dobbs.
My name is Miles Vaught.
My name is Stephanie Dahmer.
Thank you. And your name?
I'm sorry?
Did you introduce yourselves?
I don't know if I did, I'm Ruthie Kaplinger, I'm their teacher.
Thank you. Okay. How about our head? You're on. These are points, uh, the memory thing, I guess, not actually points, but values from the city. Would you like to each one of you have one? Oops, I gave you two. And someone told me that you might, wanna take a picture, would you like to have your pictures taken? Why don't you get over here where this is in the background, maybe if you can come around here to get them all? Come on up here. Kinda getting two rows maybe, or three perhaps? Anybody who wants to take a picture, just come on up and get the best shot you can get. Can you get everybody in the picture here? Everybody say cheese. Give them a big smile. Great job. You may, you may just, two seconds again?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, we appreciate having you here, but obviously, uh, you don't have to stay if, if you'd like to leave. We, uh, we certainly understand. Thank you for coming.
You're hurting.
We'll get, that, and that doesn't go for you, Ken. We'll give them just a second then. Uh, the next item on the, uh, agenda is a presentation of the Kevin Meinhardt Award, and that would be Gail.
I am so pleased tonight to be able to, um, present the first ever Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. I'd like to start by introducing Cindy Meinhardt, which is Kevin's wife, and she came in from Kansas City today.
I did.
To be here for the presentation of this award, and I think we have some family members too.
I do.
So, um, we'd like to thank all of them for coming in. Um, the Kevin Meinhardt, I'm sorry, here we go. Uh, Kevin served on the Board of Adjustment from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and twelve, and during that time he just demonstrated his commitment to public service and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. And because of that, in recognition and gratitude and appreciation to him, um, the Kevin Meinhardt Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was born. Uh, nominations were submitted, they could be submitted by any member serving on a city board, committee, or commission, including any staff liaison or city council member. Um, we received a number of outstanding nominations this year, all of whom were very well, very, very deserving of this award, and I'm glad that I was not the mayor to have to make that decision, 'cause I think that was a tough decision for him. But the candidates selected certainly, um, displays all of those things that we looked for, and that was, um, public service devotion, excellence and professionalism while serving, outstanding enthusiasm for public service, and conduct which reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct, all of which were traits that Kevin exhibited during his years of service. This year's recipient chairs the Cultural Arts Commission, where she spearheaded the birth of the Cultural Arts Foundation, which she also, by the way, serves as the chair of the foundation too. Um, the foundation allows citizens and businesses of Jefferson City to make tax deductible donations to the arts. So I would like to congratulate and invite to the front this year's recipient, who is Lucia Erickson-Kinchlo. Before we give, I give her the plaque, I just wanna mention a couple of other things. Um, Lucia has served on the Cultural Arts Committee since its inception in March of two thousand and nine. She has served as chair, and she has just unanimously, unanimously been elected by her, her co-members to serve as a chair for her third year, so. Um, she's worked tirelessly putting together projects and agenda items for the commission. She has successfully worked with many art groups, citizens, and businesses in bringing together art projects for our community. She worked very long hours and donated her own money and supplies for some of the fundraisers the commission and the foundation have held. She's also talked with council members and the mayor to gain support for the art projects planned by the commission and the foundation. A few of the programs that she has spearheaded include the three wine tasting events, um, including the most recent Sip and Sit that I know a number of you went to, and just to show, um, her enthusiasm and dedication, um, most of you know at the Sip and Sit they had a live auction of rocking chairs that were painted by local artists, and when they had a hard time finding more rocking chairs, she plucked a couple off her own porch and donated them, and she also painted some of the rocking chairs, so, um, if that's not dedication, I don't know, but, um, she also helped to spearhead the theatrical presentation of the Fantastics along with the Capital Region Foundation and the Connect to the Arts Festival, which was held a couple of years ago. She's working hard to bring park settings and art into the roundabouts. She has a love for both art and serving her community, and it really shows in her commitment to the commission and to the foundation. I'd like to present this to you, Lucia. Congratulations, thank you, Gail. Good Gail. Well deserved. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say on behalf of the entire Meinhardt family, we are so thrilled that you're receiving this award tonight.
Cindy, thank you. I, um, I do wanna thank, uh, the Meinhardt family and, um, the council and, and the mayor and, and all the people that really have been so helpful in the commission, Carrie and Rick, um, who are our liaisons, and, and of course Eric, but, you know, really, you all have really created, you know, an atmosphere of trust and respect, and, uh, for the council, um, and the commission to develop a relationship that's allowed us to grow and prosper and create, and you really haven't put a time limit on it, so we've, you've allowed us to really create a really strong structure that people can build on for the future, and, um, you know, I, I don't wanna make this a political statement, but, you know, Obama got the Nobel Peace Prize, um, and maybe slightly before he, um, you know, did a lot of peacekeeping, so I hope you'll allow me to hang around for a little while, to live up to the legacy of, of your husband, and, uh, I thank you all for, um, for your support of the commission. Thank you, and the foundation.
Okay. Sure. Bit of indecision there, but I think we're back on track now. Uh, there are no public hearings, so, uh, item five is minutes and reports received and filed, Animal Control Section monthly report for November two thousand and thirteen, Campo Technical Committee, November seven, two thousand and thirteen, Code and Contact Issue Report for November two thousand and thirteen. Uh, item six is Council Committee Reports, Administration Committee, Councilwoman Carroll.
Thank you. The Administration Committee met Wednesday, December fourth, and our next meeting will be the first Wednesday of January at eight AM. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Carroll? Okay, uh, item B, Finance Committee, um, Mr. Schulte.
Thank you, President. Um, we are in receipt of our one percent general sales tax, uh, for the receipt period of December, which was nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars year to date. Unfortunately, we're forty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars behind budget for general sales tax. That same time period, the half-cent capital improvement sales tax was, uh, the receipts, four hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, uh, year to date, uh, and this is the final month of collections year to date, uh, we are short thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Also, just to update you on the lodging tax, we have, uh, through December, or through September, we have one million, four hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars in, um, lodging tax, and our fund balance, uh, at this time is three million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand. The next Finance Committee meeting is next Tuesday, uh, December twenty-fourth, seven thirty AM across the hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schulte. Any questions, uh, on that report? Uh, if not, Public Safety Committee, Mr. Prather.
Uh, we do not have a report today since there has not been a meeting, but our next meeting will be held on Thursday, January second, across the hall after the Brown Baker meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the Public Works and Planning Committee, uh, has not met since our last meeting, and we, uh, have canceled the December meeting for lack of, uh, agenda items, and our next meeting will be the third Thursday in January, two thousand and fourteen, uh, be January twenty-third, I guess, two thousand and fourteen. Um, and, uh, on other committee liaison reports, uh, I'm the chairman of the City Administrator Search Committee, and I will, uh, tell you that, uh, that search is ongoing. Uh, as reported in the newspaper, uh, we had a number of applicants, and, uh, we have been, uh, in the process of reviewing those applications and, uh, and, uh, going through the process, and, uh, we should, uh, seems like everything is on schedule, I guess I'm being a little vague, but that's, that's probably all I can share with you tonight. Um, appointments by the mayor, city boards, are there any other liaison committee reports? Uh, city boards and commissions, uh, we have, um, on cultural arts, we have Susan Suttergren on CBB, Steve Balkin, Dave Gershner, and Cindy Schneiders. Historic Preservation, Brent Hemphill and Doug Regard, and Environmental Quality, Pam Barkhouse. Uh, do I have a motion to approve as?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please make known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As presented, passed as presented. Item eight, Presentations from Staff, Consultants, and Invited Guests, Diane Gillespie, Presentation of CBB Budget. Thank you. Do you have an extra one? Okay, thank you. If you don't, you can take this one. I've got it, but it's at home.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to, uh, come here this evening. Um, I've just handed out to you our proposal for our two thousand and fourteen budget, um, and I did email this to you all, and I think I've spoken to a few of you regarding any questions that you did have. Um, I will go in saying with this budget that we did go in pretty conservative. We have a one point seven percent increase from the two thousand and thirteen budget. Um, I do feel like that is where we are going to be. However, as you know, uh, we do have a couple items such as the MSP, the Missouri State Penitentiary, that we're still kind of waiting for sure when we are going to be open. This budget does include MSP revenues and expenses, um, and in previous discussions that we've had with OA, they are still looking at getting us open for spring, so we are moving forward as though we're going to have it. Um, if we find out that that's gonna change, the budget may have to be revised. Couple of the items, um, that I will point out to you, um, that we have changed a little bit, that, I mean, it's pretty much the same as last year's. If you do look at, um, marketing, we did increase that budget by seven point four percent, um, and some of those items are in internet marketing that we're going to be doing for MSP and for the city of Jefferson, along with, um, some sponsorships. To bring events into our community, um, we have bid feeds or groups are asking for some sponsorships, so we've added a little bit more money in there to maybe help bring in more events into our community as we move forward. Um, otherwise, there's not a whole lot of other changes, um, that really kind of pop out to you. Um, I know I visited with, uh, Mr. Scrivner this morning, so he may have some additional questions, or if any of you do. Questions? Oh, come on.
Has, uh, anyone, does anyone have any questions? Anyone had a chance to review the budget, have any questions? As Diane said, she and I did get together this morning for about an hour, I guess, and, uh, I appreciated your, uh, update, information at that time, and you answered my questions, but I don't know, yes, Rick?
Uh, do you have any idea when you might hear about the MSP as to when you, when you can start, or?
Sure. We met with Drew and myself, and OA met a couple weeks ago, and they are still saying the first of March, which is when our normal tour seasons, or the first of April. Um, but the, so we, but we have not started taking reservations, I will say that much, individual reservations. We have taken some group reservations, but we have them on call, and we will be meeting with OA after the first of the year can, to confirm when we're gonna move forward. Um, so as soon as we have final word, we will move, we will go with it. Um, as you know, our tour season runs March the first through the, through the end of November. Uh, March is always kind of iffy because of weather, and as you know, March of, of thirteen, we had so much snow that we actually ended up canceling quite a few tours. So in my discussions with OA, I said, you know, March is kind of one of those iffy months that if we have to lose it, it won't hurt us horribly, um, as long as we can get up and get going, say by April or May, that'd be great.
And the reason they couldn't quite give us a firm date yet is because it's a wacky, you know, December and January, tough construction seasons, so it'll depend, a lot of roof works, it'll depend on some weather and, and wind and stuff, to make sure those conditions are met. There, as Diane said, they appeared very hopeful, but
Yes.
Didn't wanna give us firm dates till they get farther into the deal.
Any other questions about the budget? Uh, Ms. Carroll?
Hey, y'all make a comment. I serve as the liaison to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, and, um, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for being so thorough on the budget, and I know the board has done an excellent job
Yes.
Of, um, really reviewing this at every board meeting, and also, um, uh, taking the situation with the MSP and being able to handle that very well, you all really did.
Thank you.
And, uh, with the museum above your, your space there on High Street is really coming along nicely, so
Yes.
There's been a lot of things happening since you came on board
Mm-hmm.
That you've taken on, and really done a fine job, you and your staff, 'cause your staff is really excelling at, uh, marketing our community, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And I would like to say I appreciate the city's support on the MSP, um, you know, it's kind of one of those that we thought everything was gonna turn out right, but you still have it kind of dangling your, over your head if it is, so, uh, we do feel like the city and the state have come together, and we will be, be able to move forward with this.
Um, any, any other questions? I just wanna make a comment, uh, part of this, uh, oh, I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah.
No, go ahead, go ahead, uh, I'll... Are, are the employees, uh, CBB, city employees?
No, they're not.
Okay, and, how, how is it different?
We are contracted with the city, we are a destination marketing organization that is contracted with the city, so we are not per se state, or city employees. But we do try to follow some of the city guidelines, just because of our relationship and the contract that we do have.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, one of the, the items that's in this report, it's really not the budget, but one of the things that, uh, Councilman, uh, Olivick, uh, was, uh, instrumental in, I think, is asking for, uh, some metrics and, and performance measures.
Correct.
And, uh, you'd included those in there, and I was real interested
I did.
To read some of this material, and I'm not gonna ask you to tell us all about, but I think it's, kind of reflects positively on the, uh, CBB.
Thank you.
And, uh, how it's part of the fabric of, uh, economic development
Absolutely.
And promotion of the community.
Absolutely.
And, uh, one of the things I noticed that was impressive to me, uh, you know, I've, from time to time I have, in fact, I had, I talked to a person today in the coffee shop who said, "I just can't believe anybody wants to go and tour the prison." Why would anybody wanna do that? And I, I shared with them that, according to your report, that there'd been people from twenty-one different states that, uh, had come and toured, uh, that prison.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, of course, the most of them were from, uh, Missouri, but we had, uh, I said twenty-one states, actually, one of the, uh, on the list here is from Canada.
Right.
Uh, also Massachusetts, uh, is quite a ways, uh, from us, uh, New Hampshire is another one.
Yes.
Florida, uh, of course Minnesota, Arkansas, Arizona, tho- those are a long ways that people have come, uh, to tour the prison, and, and, uh, you indicated to me day, today in our meeting that, um, you'd really just kind of gotten the tour buses, the coaching,
Yes.
The coach industry, uh, kinda in the fold and starting to be interested in sending tours and so forth, uh, when we had to cancel.
Yes.
But, uh, you're already getting inquiries, you indicated, uh, for next year.
Absolutely. Um, you know, a lot of this is the, is just individual reservations...
kind of in the fold and starting to be interested in sending tours and so forth when we had to cancel. But you're already getting inquiries, you indicated, for next year.
Absolutely. You know, a lot of this is just individual reservations, visitors coming in. But we have started seeing an impact on these from the motor coach industry. So, if you see the large motor coaches running around the community, a lot of them are coming in because of MSP. But then we also, you know, let them know what else is here in Jefferson to see. But it has been a good anchor for Jefferson City. It's made us a destination for those motor coaches. And this fall, even with all the MSP things, we had a group that came in and spent four nights, and they used 50 rooms. So, that's 200-room nights, just from a motor coach group that we were able to bring in and use Jefferson City as our spoke. And we went out to Fulton and Herman and up to Warm Branch Springs up there. So, we're kind of looking at that as another market for us to explore. But we're seeing some impact from it, and it is growing.
And your report here says that there had been a study done by Dr. Michael Kalin at the University of Missouri that indicated $53.63 per head per night when people spend the night in Jefferson City from outside town.
We put that in as for, on the low side, that may not mean that they spend the night, but they are coming into Jefferson City and buying a ticket to go to MSP or to other attractions. But they're also going and visiting our restaurants, buying gas, and visiting our retails. So, that's where they came up with the $53.63 for a day tripper coming in.
That's a day tripper.
That's a day tripper. So, that doesn't even include the overnight stays. So, and I think that's pretty low, but I always go pretty conservative. But I think that's a realistic number that people can grab hold of and go, "Okay, I believe that." It makes sense to you.
All right. Well, I appreciate you coming tonight. And I guess one last question. Is this report on your website if someone wants to?
It is not yet. I will say that we are in the process of updating our website. We hope to have it ready by the first quarter of 2014. We will get it on there, though, so that it is available for anybody to see that they would. They can always email us. We will have it available. But in the back tab, I will just mention is that those are the performance measures, measurements, kind of a recap of those that were in our contract that I went through and just kind of put into a format so that maybe you guys could look at that. And if you have any questions at any time, please don't hesitate to call us, and we'd be glad to sit down and visit with you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew, I'd ask you, did we put a copy of this on our city website, you know?
I don't know if we did, but we can.
I think it would be good to have that on there. I think this is a part of our overall economic development efforts in the community, and I think it'd be something good to have on our website as well. Okay. Next item or the next person is Alan Pollak, Housing America Contest.
My name's Alan Pollak, and I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. For those of you that don't know me, I appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to help me recognize these two young children who are passing out copies of calendars to you. First, I need to introduce them. Their mother, Donna Adams, is here. This is Donna Page. And this is Jalen. And I also have a commissioner here. Well, I guess actually he's your commissioner, but Denny Miller is a commissioner on the Housing Authority Board. I'm here, we are here to ask your help in recognizing these two children. Every, for the last six years, there's a contest held nationally by the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, which is one of the big housing groups in Washington, DC. And through its state chapters, ours is called Missouri NIRO, there's a poster contest that asks the children of residents of assisted housing or affordable housing to answer the question, "What does housing mean to me?" Last year, Paige submitted an entry and was recognized on the state level. This year, she was submitted an entry again in one first place in the elementary grade level. That automatically went to national. And her poster, which you see on the screen, is, was one of the 12 national winners, and those appear in the two calendars. Jalen won at our state level for, as an honorable mention. I think this was the first year you submitted. We're real proud of both of them, but especially proud of Paige, who received the national recognition for this program. I might say they are, this family, are former residents with us. They are now living in their own unit. This picture, this is Jalen's poster. As you can see by the poster, Jalen intends, he's in the fourth grade, but he's already pretty dead set that he wants to pursue a military career. And if you look closely at the lower right-hand corner, it says West. And I knew they didn't go to West School, and it suddenly dawned on me, he's seeking to go get an appointment to West Point. On Paige's poster, you can see it's pretty obvious she wants to study, have a career in the medical field and become a doctor. So, we've asked the mayor, I don't know who's going to do this. I'm sorry. There are, there's a certificate, some envelopes up there with the orange bow. Let me tell you what those are. The Housing Authority has presented Jalen, and that's in that envelope with his name on it, a 25 gift certificate from the Board of Commissioners for his winning honorable mention. Paige's list is a little bit longer. She will be presented with a framed copy of this poster, excuse me, which is the original poster, as well as a $100 savings bond. We don't have those yet because that association is housed in Washington, DC. And we all know that everything goes really smooth and quick coming out of Washington. Soon as we get those, we will get them to the family. The Missouri chapter of NIRO is awarding the certificate. And there's a $50 gift card for her use. And the board, the Housing Authority Board, is providing a $100 gift card. It was an interesting conversation about whether we should buy savings bonds or not. It was unanimous, these kids don't want savings bond, give them some cash. So, it's Christmas time. Just thought I'd throw that in there. So, we're real proud of this family, having lived with us for several years, and now are out on their own and having two children like this that are willing to submit to a contest and even better, get, win the contest. So, this is Paige Crumley, and this is Jalen Frank, and these are our two award winners.
And Alan, we've thrown in a couple of city coins, just to honor the occasion as well.
I think I'm way more nervous than these children are.
Tell you what, the future's in great hands from what we've seen tonight, wouldn't you think? I think so. Okay. The next thing is Janice McMillan regarding Planning and Protective Services Department Reorganization.
Thank you, Mr. President. If, Greg, if you could go to the next slide. This slide shows the current organization in the department. As of the present time, we have four operational divisions. MPO, Planning and Zoning, Inspections, and Redevelopment and Grants. And this organization has been in place since 2011. And you'll notice that the Inspection Division contained 10 persons. It's by far the largest division in our small department. Up until Ron Davenport retired, we had 20.5 full-time equivalent positions. So, that's our current organization. In order to take advantage of some efficiencies, and Greg, if you'd go to the next slide, the proposal is to expand the number of operating divisions to five. And that would include MPO and redevelopment grants, which would experience no change. And out of the Inspection Division, create a Development Services and Code Enforcement and Property Maintenance section. So, those would come out of the Inspection Division. The Development Services would also bring in the Planning and Zoning Division into that mix. And then the Environmental Health, which has been, always been its own work group, would also function as a separate division. So, that's how the organization would look. It'd flatten it out, take advantage of some efficiencies and natural relationships among the divisions, and I think make us more responsive to achieving the city's goals. Be happy to answer any questions.
I guess I would have a question. This is a change that is not just in response to the change in personnel, but it's a change that is one that you consider a long-term reorganization?
Yes. When you look at how our division provides services, especially in the Development Services end, those staff members work a lot with the same staff and with the same members of the public, consultants, contractors, developers. So, that's a natural relationship, and I think would provide some efficiencies there. On the Code Enforcement side, those folks are, some of them are working together now. And so, it makes more sense to let them work as a Code Enforcement Division and be charged with working those issues citywide.
Okay. Any questions from council? Mr. Helfer?
I just wanted to say there's no title changes, no salary increases. This is strictly moving people around.
Okay. Very good. Well, you know, you were challenged to do more with less, and if this helps you to do that, then that's exactly what we are happy to see you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Moving on, find my place here. We have an announcement by Mayor, Council, and Staff, and I guess in this case, Staff. Mr. Helfer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind the public the filing period for City Council ends tomorrow at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Item 10, Presentations from the Gallery on Specific Bills or Resolutions. At this time, I think we only have one person signed up. That would be Mr. Tim Stallman, wanting to speak about Bill 120. Mr. Stallman? Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
Tim Stallman, 2204 Melody Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri. I have read Bill Number 2013-120 Concerning Guidelines for Economic Incentives Policies, and have the following comments. And this was sponsored by Councilman Schulte, this item. "The public needs to be informed when TIFs, SIDS, NIDS, TIDS, and Chapter 100 bonds are being proposed, and we deserve an election to approve any bond issuance or other indebtedness. The laws creating these creative financing methods have intentionally reduced the taxpayers' ability to understand and put the brakes on this alphabet soup of financing schemes. The business groups, who are the secret authors of these laws, knew the public would never buy into these partnership scams, so they set up a scheme that sidesteps elections and hoodwinks the taxpayers. Bit by bit, we are losing our democracy, and failure to keep the public informed is one cause of that. I am proposing adding a Part Six and Part Seven to Section 25-301, General Policy and Procedural Guidelines, under Section B, general procedural requirements as follows. Six, public participation is the lifeblood of democracy in our city, and public notice is the trigger for that participation. It shall be the policy of the City of Jefferson to go above and beyond the statutory public notice requirements for any of the laws creating economic incentives. To that end, the city will provide notice to the public within three working days of the initial official document being filed with the city as outlined in Part Three above, which triggers the review process. This public notice shall include press releases to all the local media, including TV, radio, and newspapers having a subscription base. The city must also have a summary of all of the project available for viewing on the city website. Two weeks before any official hearing on an economic development matter, the city shall cause a notice to be placed in the official county newspaper large enough to be easily seen, not a little tiny one like we got last time. This is in addition to other legal notices. And seven, it shall be the policy of the City Council to not approve any bond issue without a vote of the citizens approving the issuance of those bonds. And I understand that that's probably not going to go down well with you, but it's needed. Other thoughts, the city must never allow what happened to Mobley happened to our city. Under AA, General Policy Matters, Number Five, this document seems to discourage participation by minorities and other groups with less business experience than the already rich and powerful, or those with established business connections. This needs to be rewritten to encourage these groups, not to scare them away. Where is the provision for yearly audits so the public doesn't get robbed? Where is the requirement for yearly reports to the public, published in a newspaper, for all to see? It needs to be there. These public-private partnerships are an accident waiting to happen. Every precaution should be taken to make sure that these economic policies do not favor the already wealthy. No wonder the rich are getting richer, and the middle-income class is dropping like a rock. These policies seem to promote that income disparity. If we aren't careful, we will end up with a caste system like they have in India if we don't already." And I would like to pass out a copy of my remarks to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I don't know if you want to, if you want to have anything to say, or any questions of Mr. Helpert in response to that at this time, or if you want to wait till later in the agenda, but I'll give you that opportunity. Okay. Seeing no, no hands, we'll move on to the next item. Number 11, the consent agenda. Meetings of city council meeting, or, excuse me, minutes of city council meetings, December 3rd and December 9th, 2013, approval of CBB budget, grant acceptance for McKay Area Greenway. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? It's passed unanimously. There are no bids over 50,000. Item 13, bills introduced.